I appeal to my colleagues, though you passed a vote of confidence on me, the leadership passed a vote of confidence on my personality as the chairman of this committee. For the sake for Nigerians to know, I'm not on a mission of vengeance. I wish to humbly appeal to my colleagues to recuse me from presiding over this particular meeting. I hope this will give you, this will give all parties opportunity to present their facts in the interest of the people of the Niger Delta. Honorable colleagues, I plead with you, I know it's painful to, it's gonna be painful to most of you, but the right thing must be done in the interest of our nation. At this juncture, I want to thank you very much for listening. I want to thank you very much for your understanding. I want to thank you very much for the level of cooperation. And I want to assure the Nigerian people that this particular agenda is for the betterment of our region and for the nation. Nothing personal, and there's never gonna be anything personal. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. God bless you.
Oh, wow. Okay. Breaking news, we just caught that on our live broadcast. Olubemi Ojo, the chairman of the panel, of the House panel that is probing the NDDC, has just recused himself. He has just recused himself. And, you know, matters will continue to proceed. But that's the breaking news as we are live in Abuja as we watch the House of Reps probe. The NDDC, Mr. Olubemi Ojo, chairman, has just recused himself as chair of the panel.
We had the speech of the chairman of this committee, met our respected guests, our minister, the deputy MD, and host of other guests that are here today. Like the chairman did mention very clearly, we are here as brothers and sisters and we're here to do justice to the issue we have at hand. This is an investigation panel. It's not a probe. Nobody's been probed here. There are issues that we needed you to come and throw light on. That's why we're here. So as the proceeding goes on, we ensure that everybody is giving fair hearing, but we also have to moderate to ensure that at the end of today, we have a good proceeding. On that note, I want to thank everybody. And next, on the list, where we do our introduction. Our members, we introduce ourselves. Our members, we introduce ourselves, starting from the extreme right. Olubemi Ojo.
Mr. Chairman, distinguished colleagues, our invited guests. My name is Idem Unyeme, member representing Ukanafun, Orogwunam Federal constituency in Akwaibom State, and by the grace of God, a member of this committee.
Mr. Chairman, Deputy Chairman, that is in acting capacity at the moment. Honorable colleagues, the clerk of this committee, our invited guests, the honorable minister, and the acting MD with your officers. My name is Benjamin Okizie Carlo, and I represent the good people of Nigeria. Starting from Bende Federal constituency, I am a member of this committee, and I'm from Abia State.
Mr. Chairman, honorable colleagues, our guests. Odembe Mshegun is my name. I represent the good people of Surulere Gula Federal constituency, to the glory of God, a member of this committee.
Mr. Chairman, my honorable colleagues. My name is Olumide Oshaba. I represent Abekuta North, Obafemi Ode, and Odera Federal constituency. I'm from the gateway to Nigeria, Ogun State.
Mr. Chairman, honorable colleagues, invited guests. Francis Ajirogane Wivese, my name. I represent the entire people of Ugalin North, Ugalis South, and Odoo. I'm from Delta State. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, honorable colleagues, invited guests. I'm Honorable Bumaguda, representing Akokotoro, Saritoro Federal constituency. I'm from Revest State.
All right, once again, as the panel is introducing themselves, you're watching a global business report on Arise News live in Abuja. NDDC investigation that's happening, the House of Reps panel. And of course, once again, the breaking news, Olubemi Ojo, the chair, has recused himself from this panel that is about to investigate the NDDC. I'm still with Arise Business Analyst Chika Unbonu. Chika, any thoughts as this panel is about to begin?
Sad commentary as to very good intention. NDDC was set up for the good of the people of the Niger Delta. And so many trillions of money that have passed through the NDDC. Yet, if you go to that place, you find that, you know, the poverty in the land is so much. You know, the impact of NDDC has not been felt by the citizens of those, of that region. And so it's a sad commentary on Nigeria. And so you notice the drama that played out in the last two, three weeks. You know, with claims and counterclaims as to what is the real fact. The truth, we don't know the real fact. We don't know whose side is telling us the truth. So we hope that even with, you know, Mr. Ojo recusing himself, will bring some transparency into the process that we have now. And then facts only will speak for themselves. So at the end of the day, the president will have the real facts to make decision to save this institution from destruction, you know. We need to go there and see that the part of the nation that's giving us our, our resources, our earnings, you know, the kind of suffering that is over there, you know. So we hope that this committee will look at these issues factually and come out with solutions as to how to resolve the problems of the region.
Thank you for that. Again, Arise Business Analyst Chika Unbonu giving his thoughts there as the panel introduces themselves. Once again, the breaking news, Olubemi Ojo, the chair of this House panel is investigating the NDDC, has recused himself. And so the panel continues to introduce themselves and proceedings continue. Again, global business report on Arise News live in Abuja will take, will take things up again.
Mr. Chairman, honorable colleagues, our guests. I'm Honorable Seidu Yusup Miga. I represent Jahun Miga Federal constituency. I am from Jigao State. Thank you.
Thank you, distinguished chairman, honorable colleagues, our guests. My name is Honorable Adidigi Stanley Olajide, member representing Ibadon Northwest, Southwest Federal constituency. I'm from Oyo State.
Mr. Chairman, distinguished colleagues, invited guests. My name is Honorable Amadi Dennis. I represent Udi Ezag Federal constituency. I'm from Enugu State.
May it please the committee, I invite us all, the whole House. My name is Usoma Nkem Abonta. I represent Oka East Federal constituency of Abia State.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman. I'm Jaikbagom Jaikbi. I'm from the Niger Delta.
Mr. Chairman, respected colleagues, invited guests. My name is Honorable Amabe Inusah Apintala. I represent good people of Aye Dree Iwo Alalu Federal constituency. I'm from Ashun State. A member of this committee.
Respectfully, Mr. Chairman, distinguished colleagues, invited guests. My name is Shaba Ibrahim. I represent Lokojakugi Federal constituency. I'm from Kogi State. I'm a member of this committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, honorable colleagues. Honorable Gunna Osiribo is my name. I'm from Imo State. I represent the good people of Nkore, Wangele, Issu, and Njaba Federal constituency.
Mr. Chairman, honorable colleagues, invited guests. I am Honorable Ibrahim Kondley Olarewaji. I represent the very good people of Idoosi Mombi Ilijime Federal constituency. I am from Mekiti State and a member of this committee.
Mr. Chairman, honorable colleagues, invited guests. My name is Fred Obua, representing the good people of Ogbia Federal constituency. I'm from Bayelsa State.
Mr. Chairman, honorable colleagues, invited guests. My name is Honorable Barista Ifai Chudimoma. I represent the people of Ihiala Federal constituency area of Anambra State. Thank you.
Riding on the established protocol, my name is Kola De Victor Kingjo, Elajese Federal constituency, Ondo State. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, honorable colleagues. My name is Chief Thomas Eretomi. I represent Waris South, Waris North, and Waris Southwest. I'm from Delta State. By the grace of God, I'm the deputy chairman of this committee and also the one to preside over today's meeting. Honorable member and our guest, for the purpose of us that are not here in a locked sitting, which was on Friday, and our members too, it be due to us to actually give you an overview of what we did in our last sitting.
They will introduce themselves, they will introduce themselves when they want to talk. When they want to talk.
So.
When they, when they want to talk.
So, these are the following, like minutes of meeting what we have on, on Friday. The committee chairman, Honorable Olubemi Tunjo Ojo, read the summary of the minutes of Monday, the two proceeding, which was therefore adopted by the committee. He then proceeds the names of the stakeholders scheduled to make presentation on the talk day as follow. One, MD of construction, Kola Ole Johnson, two, Major Nenu, to present via Zoom. Four, MD of Osmos, MD of HRO Global. The summaries of their presentation is as follow. Road map. The MD of Global has earlier been directed by the committee to appear before in person to make his presentation, submit document, and answer question from the committee. But the committee secretary, Mr. Adamu Ishariku Musa, submitted a letter of apology and doctor report to the chairman indicating that the MD was not feeling well. He was then placed on hold. The committee questioned the authenticity of the medical report because the same Adamu Shaka Musa, on the seconds of the preceding hearing, which is on the 16th of July, claimed under oath that the MD was in particular overseeing the completion of the construction of the NDDC quarter building, which he stated was about 79% completed. Two, the committee rejected apology later and the doctor report and directed the MD to appear in person on Monday, 20th, July 2020 at 11:00 AM, which is today. Two, Kola Ole Johnson representing Act for Positive Transformation Initiative. He was placed on hold. He apologized for appearing on the, on the two, on investigating hearing, as scheduled. If other butts were secure for his life to appear in person and make his submission after, after he read Mr. President Bahari's statement of support of the investigation of NDDC by the National Assembly and other government agency. He also felt compelled to appear to expose contrast scam, fraud, and recklessness in award of contracts to croakers and unqualified company because the common partner of the Niger Delta M6, which were living below $1 per day, is filtered away by few persons in the commission. Three, he read unable to prove allegations of contract scam contained in his presentation, which he was submitted to the secretary. Four, he stated that on Sunday 26, April 2020, Nigeria watch a member of the IMC, the director of projects, Dr. Caro Ojigbo, on channel television claimed that the commission has not awarded any contracts since the inauguration of IMC in October 2019. But when Osmos Service was mentioned on the program as one of the beneficiaries of the recent contracts on COVID-19, Dr. Caro denied any knowledge of the company called Osmos Service and that the IMC was waiting for Mr. President approval before the commencement or the process of award of contract. Four, five, Mr. Kolaray said that contrary to Dr. Caro claim, Osmos Service was awarded a contract for emergency supplies and delivery of medical equipment and consumable as well as up to the tune of 638 million naira on the 20th of April 2020. As 15% advance payment, further payment was made in May 2020, bringing this total amount to 4.861 billion. Six, Julius Digger, a contractor was paid 98 billion on the 22nd April 2020 for consultancy for provisions of publication in prevention of the spread of coronavirus in 185 local government in nine Niger Delta states. This company is an engineering firm and have nothing to do with the media consultants, which contravened the procurement art. And also, there was no trace of the contract implementation. A R O, A H R Global is a transport company that was awarded a contract for the procurement of social relief package for the distressed and vulnerable people across the nine NDDC states. A program that was not budgeted for, followed due process or approved by FAC. Nine, a contract of 268 million was awarded to a company called Table Building and Logistics for emergency consultancy for provisions of refresher, training, occurrence in prevention, and treatment for coronavirus. Is not engaged in a medical and health service and yet was awarded the contract for training of health workers. The company subsequent, the company subsequently subcontracted the job to a medical firm owned by Dr. Ufoman, who claimed she had only received 15 million for the job and no more. Furthermore, Mr. Kolaray revealed that all the emergency contracts awarded to Jackson and some multinational described as agents, emergency consultancy for the construction of infant Jesus. He alleged that this is one of the contract scam. He further complained that payment of 641 million was paid to a company called Clearpoint Communication. On the 22nd May 2020, he alleged that the substantial portions of the money was transferred to the bureau de change to convert to dollars and also made transfer to NDDC staff account. For example, several cash transfers were made to Mr. Charles Odili into his UBN accounts between March and May, ranging between 1 to 5 million naira. He also informed the committee that the investigation revealed that most contract awards in a like manner are not meant to be executed. Once payment are made, he alleged that contractor changed the money to dollars and share. He further alleged that the students on scholarship abroad are being looked out for their respective school for not payment of fees while money made for the student are be paid into IMC private account. For example, the RT MD of the Commission Professor Pondy received a foreign scholarship payment into his personal UBA account on the 17th of April, and also Dr. Cairo Ojigbo also received millions into his personal account. He pleaded with the committee to look into the plight of this Abadon Niger Delta scholarship abroad. He also said that from the findings, the Commission headquarters building that they got the total of 13 billion after the current IMC was inaugurated, even though the project cannot be adjourned to be of the utmost critical importance now because of the following reason. One, only a major sum of 83.7 million annual rent are being paid to the landlord from 2023 to 2011. And in 2012, only 90 million naira was even paid through Dr. Caro. I'll be broadening lies on national television that the commission was paying rent for 300 million naira annually. The recent, the rent grossly rose to 175 million as at the last payment in 2019. Mr. Kolaray revealed that the River State government now has the ownership based on a court judgment and expected that the commission should be given in a better position on how to negotiate the lower rent with the government rather than spending, spending the enormous amount on the building at this moment. He alleged that the road construction has some personal relationship and link with the Minister Senator Godwin Ababio. Finally, he submits his memorandum to the secretary.
Mr. Chairman, please, now you apply, Mr. Chairman, sir. Because of time and for fear into that the submission of various people that have caused appearance before this committee, which you are reading now, that a copy of it be sent to the, to our invitees. Then, if they have submissions, based on the letters I've written to them, let them lay their submission on oath. That's my application, Mr. Chairman. That the copy you are reading that they should be served because they are not here when this will made presentation and also because of time. So let them be given a copy each of the submission made by other people that have appeared before us so that they can go through them and then we can cross-examine them on the content of those submissions.
Chairman. Chairman first. Yes, sir. My, my own take on that is the fact that we cannot be looking at what others. We should look at their submission. They should bring their submission. Then let's work them through their submission.
Chairman, Honorable Koku. I really want to rely on the second speaker that we should allow them to make their own submission on oath. When they make the submission on oath, then the committee can start the work. I think it's more proper and conduct. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, honorable colleagues. I hereby move that our guests should furnish us with their submission so that we can work them through with their submission on oath. I beg to move.
Chairman, I saw second. I saw second.
And to allow them, take them on oath, is hereby sustained.
We, when it gets to the time of the MD, we introduce themselves. When we get to, when they would, that's what we'll be doing since when they want to make the journey. No, we are taking the presentation with Kolarole.
Honorable colleagues, our respected guests. We have the Minister of Niger Delta there. Parts of the persons that are invited today that will make presentation. We have Mr. Kolarole Johnson who have additional information. We have the Minister of Niger Delta. We have the RT MD of NDDC and any other person. But for the purpose of this investigation to kickstart, where we take the acting MD first to kickstart the entire process that we have today. Mr. Chairman. RT MD please, please put him on hold. Yes. Hi, Professor Kamevradikmo Daniel Ponday. Do solemnly swear that the evidence I shall give before this honourable committee that the evidence I shall give before this honourable committee shall be the truth shall be the truth the old truth the old truth and nothing but the truth and nothing but the truth so help me God so help me God. The chairman of this committee investigating alleged financial malfeasance and other activities in the Niger Delta Development Commission, members of the committee here present, the Honorable Minister of the Niger Delta Affairs, the Prime Minister Secretary, Ministry of Niger Delta Affairs. Want to thank the committee for the opportunity to make a presentation. First of all, want to regret the events of the previous week and just promise that it will not happen a second time. I haven't said that. I haven't said that. On the probe of the activities of the interim management committee um, of the NDDC was predicated on the malicious allegation of forty billion naira missing from the accounts of the NDDC.
Mr. Chairman, please. My fellow colleagues, I still remain to look what lay your care. Mr. Chairman, having put our brother, I mean, on oath, I expect that he's been written a letter, he's been invited and the issues have been conveyed to him, I mean, via the referral from the house. So what I expect this morning is that our brother will lay his submission on oath and then we can speak to the issues because we can't be talking offhand, you know? So if the erudite professor has made submission to the, to the secretariat of this committee, then we should have copies of his submission and should lay same publicly on oath. Here, that is, that is the way we should go. So, Sir Uncle, if you have your submission, please, let us have, please lay it on oath. Then we are admitting evidence and then we please.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, in addition to, uh, honorable Dr. Shew Koko, in addition to what my colleague have said, uh, we have to conduct ourselves, speak to the document we tend, we brought and laid to the committee on oath. That is my own submission. That's why we have to get the document and so that we can speak hand in hand with the, the, the M D of, uh, NDDC. Thank you, Chairman.
I might not have enough copies, but, um. Please let me pass it on to you. I hope the same procedure was used to everybody here. So let, let, let me lay a background.
Uh, please, Mr. Chairman. Point, point of order, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I was, um, I think you have remedied the damage because what I wanted to say is, just like Waloke said, he had taken oath, he has a document he has presented, he should accept that this document emanated from him and then speak to the document, not open his speech.
Okay. RT MD. RT MD.
Mr. Chairman, sir.
You receive a letter dated May fifteenth, twenty twenty requesting you to submit several documents to the committee.
Yes, this was done.
And you responded through your letter twenty-nine June twenty twenty by submitting a booklet confirming that this is your document.
Yes.
The document you have decked so ten and year up, is that the document you submit to the, to the investigating committee?
This one here?
Yes.
Yes, that was submitted, sir.
For the records of you have, you were asked to submit document.
Yes.
And out of the document you submit, it is only four out of fourteen, forty-one document that you submit, correct?
I cannot, uh, tell you now how many. But sir, please allow me to make a presentation, sir. Please. Uh, Uncle. You see, we on this side were your representatives.
Yes, sir.
And you elected us.
Yes, sir.
And we hold you a duty of care. Okay? We will not abuse the privilege you have given to us to represent you. Okay? Sir, we have rules here. We have rules and I'm very happy that my senior brother is sitting next to you, you know, who has been on this side in the past. So now you've had Mr. Chairman and you confirmed that the letter was written to you and he responds, you have this report. This submission, which have confirmed is your document.
Yes.
That you are the author, you are the maker. Isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, so Mr. Chairman, you should lay that document and then we take it and then we now cross-examine you. Because what you have to say, we have to speak to the, to your submission, okay? So let's have, can we have a copy of his submission, then we can now ask questions based on what you have submitted and then it's sort of waste time.
Chairman, sorry, Chairman. My comments. Thank you, Chairman. Oh, well, he's been invited via letter, he's here, he had his documents, let him give his document or speak to it thereafter tender over his golf, he has commenced. With the time is of essence for us because the place is tight and we have to observe COVID-nineteen procedures. Therefore, what am I saying? He may decide whichever way to commence his, um, uh, pleading or whatever he wants to call it. If he decides to start from bottom to up or up to down, the important is that we hear his testimonies and if he runs short of what we ask him to bring, he will go get it for us. For now, what is he with? Let's hear him, let's hear the documents having, he has commenced, we are wasting another time, that's the right thing, sir.
Mr. Chairman, uh, the procedure we have followed since the day we commenced, Mr. Chairman, is that the documents are presented and then they are adopted when, uh, presented. We now, based on that presentation, we now question those who brought those document based on what they have already presented. If we say that we should go the route of asking every respondent to present documents and take time to talk about the documents before we question, then we're not going to live here today. We already had the documents that have been circulated, we have studied them. What we've got to do now is to raise questions from those documents. Mr. Chairman, I so submit. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you for the, for yielding. Uh, RT MD. RT MD. RT MD. With me here is a letter from the committee dated fifteenth May twenty twenty requesting you to supply to supply twenty-seven for forty-one documents to the committee, forty-one documents. You only submitted four documents, which are before us and before you. That's why we insisted that you have to lay those document out and we speak to the document. That's the fact and this is the procedure of the house. If you want me to read it and tell you what and what we requested you to supply to the committee, I can do that. But I think we don't have much time. The documents are here and I believe you have the, the, the letter. We can speak on the document. That's the proper proceeding. Thank you, Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, sir. Honorable colleague, please, let's be focused. RT MD, you have the document, speak to the document. I will need to lay a background to speak to these documents. First of all, the statistics from the Central Bank of Nigeria and the Accountant General's Office stated clearly that from the thirty-first of October two thousand and nineteen to the thirty-first of May two thousand and twenty, that the sum of eighty-one point five billion naira was spent by the two IMCs. But what we were seeing in this committee is that like that eighty-one point five billion was spent in four months by the second IMC. Those are the things I was trying to lay down. That for record purposes, the Central Bank and the Accountant General's Office cannot change the figures in one week because that they stated under oath in the Senate Adoc Committee hearing that eighty-one point five billion was spent from October two thousand and nineteen to thirty-first of May twenty twenty. They also stated that from January two thousand and twenty
Uh, point of order, Chairman. Point of order. Thank you. Uh, RT MD. Those, hold, I have, I have a valid point to make. Uh, RT MD. RT MD. We, we had a presentation from Central Bank. We had presentation from the Accountant General Federation. We have presentation from BPP. Just tell us from your own side, from your own side. Forget with the CBN, forget with the Accountant General Office, whatever you tell us, you are not competent to tell us that. That's why they came, they laid the report and we cross-examined, they give us what we want and they left. You can't just come and talk about somebody that you are not there. Talk about NDDC, not CBN and, and the, and the Accountant General Office, please. That's my take, Chairman.
No, no problem, sir. So honorable colleagues, please, let's allow the M D, the acting M D to talk. Let him talk to us, speak on the document, please.
Thank you. So from January to thirty-first of May, thirty-four billion naira was remitted from the federal government to the NDDC. Now, out of the expenditure from thirty-first of October two thousand and nineteen to thirty-first May two thousand and twenty, the eighty-one point five billion, this IMC spent fifty-nine point one billion, which is very verifiable. Out of the fifty-nine point one billion, it's also verifiable that thirty-eight point six billion was spent on capital projects. The IMC published a list of contractors who have been paid up to the fifth of May in the national dailies, thirty-five point three billion and no contractor has said he was not paid. Now, all this, the IMC did not give any of those contracts. They are historical contracts that had been existing before we came. On recurrent expenditure, twenty point five billion was expended by the current IMC between, uh, twentieth of February and thirty-first of May twenty twenty. Um, it's good to note that a large proportion of the payments were for backlog of expenditure that previous managements had incurred and did not pay. And due to continuous pressures and embarrassment from creditors, the IMC decided to clear these debts. For instance, duty, uh, uh, tour allowance had not been paid for almost three years to the workers and we, we, we cleared that. Trainings and workshop. The scholarship students, we have not awarded a single scholarship. Each of them is entitled to what is called a take-off grant and has not been paid for years. We paid from two thousand and sixteen, they have not been paid. We paid five hundred thousand naira each, which is what they are due. Well, all the hotels in Portacot are being owed by NDDC. We didn't, uh, create those, we paid those ones. They all added up to the, uh, recurrent expenditure. There was no electricity in that building, the headquarters building because of twenty-six million naira. We've cleared that and electricity has been connected. The Transcorp Hilton is being owed thirty million, uh, million naira up to today for over one and a half years. All the media houses have been owed. Patrick O'Keehan Co. have not been paid for about three years for NDDC today. Sir, I'm just explaining the recurrence so that, um. Yes, sir. Um, Mr. Chairman, my colleagues, I think we need to lay the foundation properly. Uh, the M D, acting M D. I call me, sir. Acting M D, I just want to guide you. Pass one to section eighty, eighty-one of the Constitution of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. You cannot touch a dime, you can't spend a dime except in a manner prescribed by the National Assembly. So I will expect you, because I've published your submission, sir, and I've also seen the letter written to you. So for us to be able to flow seamlessly, you know, so that everybody will be on the same page. I expect that you should lay your approved budget where you derive the strength to spend the money you are, you are telling us. So that document is very key, sir. The, I'm talking about the, you resume work when? You resume work when, sir?
Uh, twentieth of, uh, February.
February?
Yes.
Okay, so it is important. If we have your approved budget be two thousand and nine, which one do you meet on ground?
The, um, the funds for NDDC comes from two parts. In the federal government budgets
Either way, I've seen the various streams of income.
In two thousand and seventeen, I mean, in December, uh, two thousand and nineteen, approved eighty billion naira.
Sir, excuse me, sir.
For, for NDDC.
M D, M D, acting M D. We want that document. The approved budget which you are operating. I know you resume job, you resume work sometimes in February. Am I correct?
Yeah, we got a letter for budget twentieth of March.
For which year?
For the two thousand and nineteen budget.
Two thousand and nineteen budget?
Yes.
So you are operating two thousand and nineteen budget, isn't it? So we need to have that document, okay? If you have it, please, can we have it?
Yeah, I this, this promise now, this document just now.
Yes, sir. Because we have record of what you have done here, what you have spent, both on personnel, both, both on overhead and capital.
Please, uh.
So please, Mr. Chairman, let us, uh, let us have that approved document, please.
This is the correction of it.
Let me see. Sir, excuse me, sir, this is the, a covering letter conveying the, this is a communication between the clerk of the National Assembly and SGF. What I'm asking you is this, the approved budget which you are operating.
Yes.
The approved budget that you are, you are operating. Can we have it? Probably, you can't put nothing on, upon, you can't put something on nothing. So the foundation, the grand sum is where is your, if you have approved budget which you are operating, there will not be cross-checking whether what you have, we are spending is contained in the budget.
We, we make that available to you, sir.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, just take note that we need to have the approved budget, okay?
No problem, sir. So, um. I'm not going to the other things there except I am asked. But I just wanted to lay. I said I just wanted to lay a foundation.
So you have told us what you have spent on overhead.
Yes, sir.
You've told us a scenario of contractors who have worked, who have not been paid for years. You've talked about people who have their bonuses, DTA outstanding for three years, which you have cleared.
Yes.
And so my worry was, okay, where is, where did you take those money from? And that's why I was asking for the approved budget. So if we have the approved budget, then you, you, you show us the approver for paying where provision has been made for those items.
Even historical debts?
Yes, historical debts.
Okay, we'll show you.
Yes. So that is because if you don't, see, you see, budget planning, budget formulation stems from provisions of Procurement Act.
No problem, sir.
If you go to section twenty, section twenty-one, section eighteen of Procurement Act, you will see how budget should be, should be prepared. When you are preparing your budget, did you do this assessment? Did it come up that, okay, you are owing extra Zed contractors? Their jobs, have they been, do you have certificates approved? Were they accommodating your procurement plan? Assuming you are not start, I call me, sir, assuming you are not starting new projects. If you are starting new projects, were they accommodated? Did you tell Nigerians the method of coming you are going to use? This is how the foundation we need to lay. There we now begin to see justification in the money, in the money, in the funds you are spending.
No problem, sir. You, you, you'll get that, sir.
Chairman. Uh, I would like to ask the acting M D.
Please, uh, M D, please, are you finished?
Please, the leader, the leader of the house is here, please.
Are you?
The leader of the house is here.
The leader of the house.
Chairman. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, please, let's make progress. Yeah, I have here the appropriation bill twenty nineteen with the statutory transfers to the NDDC.
Sir, just give us a copy, please, a class secretary, let him lay it, let's have it.
But we need the copy back, please. Please make a copy and give us back.
MD, we are waiting for you, please. We are waiting for you.
No problem, sir, they. We, we. Sir.
Sit down, go sit down, sit down, it's okay, sit down, sit down.
Yeah, over the course of our presentations by different people, sir.
No, objection, please, the document, the budget, please lay it.
I've, um, we are making copies to bring to you, the two thousand and nineteen appropriation act in which there is clear provision of money for NDDC, sir. Okay, we'll, we'll give that to you.
Okay, just hand up.
Well, we have, uh, documents we will have wanted to hand over in response to majority of the accusations that have been done against us. I don't think, um, we need to present these things. And I should be giving a chance to explain these things, if not, because it's been put into the public domain. Somebody talked about infant Jesus, you were reading the, the, and we have all those documents to, to, to debunk all those things. Sir, there is a root called infant Jesus in Asaba. Please, secretary, take and, and see.
Acting MD, acting MD. Acting MD, you recall that when I raised my observation earlier.
Yeah.
I, I, I pleaded with the chairman.
Okay. That we should respond to those things, yeah. Because we are being crucified. Chairman. Chairman.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Honorable Ben, go ahead with your point of order.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, because time is of the essence. And the minister, the uncommon minister is sitting quietly. We need to finish quickly with the MD so that we can take him. The way we are going, we might end up wasting a whole lot of time on this particular witness. Our procedure has always been, once you have taken an oath and you have adopted your document, questions will come out of the document. Because this document has been in our possession since they laid it. They only formally adopted it today under oath. Those questions will ask will give rise to him calling for further document to explain the questions we throw at him. But for now, going, leaving him to explain to the end of the day, I don't think he's going to do us a great service. Let us speak to the document that have been laid before us, ask questions, and because of answering the question, he is allowed to bring in any document that will help to clarify whatever he want to present before us. Please, that is what I want to present to you.
Sustained, Honorable Ben, your point of advice sustained. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, sir, the, wait, excuse me, MD, excuse me, excuse me. You finished your presentation? Now, now, go straight to the presentation, the key points, the money received, the key point, alight it. Then, then you come out so that we can continue, please.
Mr. Chairman, point of order. He has, he brought a document which he has adopted, that is his presentation. We have to start questioning him based on the presentation he has made. He has, he don't need to speak through the document again. He has adopted it, sir, let us go into questioning so that we can face other persons.
Mr. Chairman, sir. Mr. Chairman, sir.
The chairman's ruling stands, the chairman's ruling stands, and we should go by the chairman's ruling, the chairman's ruling stands.
Mr. Chairman, sir, um, for fair hearing, somebody spoke on Friday for almost two hours without interruption, without even, um, uh, speaking to any, uh, documents. The, those who have been coming to accuse us have come, there's another one called to come again today, he has extra information. And people are given chance, and me, I'm putting a straitjacket, just do only this, please, sir. Please, sir, allow me to do my presentation.
Yes, somebody. MD.
Yes, sir.
MD.
Chairman, sir.
Please. Honorable member, please. Uh, MD.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead with your presentation.
Thank you very much, sir. They, when I started, I was trying to lay a background of everything that happened. I'm going to hand over a file. Please, where is the secretariat? Containing the reasons why we asked the chairman to recuse himself. Then, um, I'll go through to the point about the different things. We've been accused of the scholarships. We didn't give scholarships, but we, we, we had the report that myself and Dr. Cairo, that we paid ourselves scholarships. And the basic truth is that we were processing these scholarships for these students before the late EDFA died. And just as we were about to submit it, we had accusations that our children were in the scholarship list. This had to be brought back and scrutinized. What basically happened is that, like, the universities invited the NDDC to visit for verification and for graduation. They gave the letters and ESTACO was prepared. The preparation of the ESTACO started before I go to NDDC. I only approved it and it was paid on the sixteenth of April. Because you cannot pay somebody ESTACO the day the person is going to the airport. You have to get a visa, procure, there is long time. If the journey is not made, it is for us to, to return it. But somebody will come here and come and say, uh, Cairo paid millions to his account for foreign scholarship. Please, we need to debunk that. Right now, as we speak, the scholarship payment is being processed and this week we clear the scholarships from two thousand and sixteen. Um, the forensic audits, we've been accused of every type of thing, the forensic audit is ongoing. And I will not go into that, the NDDC does not have control over the forensic audits. Our job is to provide the enabling environment and provide the requisite documents and whatever they need. Somebody here said the headquarters building is, um, so, uh, seventy-four or whatever. Please, I will have put this on the slide to show you the pictures of where the state is now. Myself and Dr. Cairo, we occupied the twelfth floor, that's where we work from. Then, um, when we came in, the staff morale was very low. Staff had not been promoted for four years. We cleared backlog of, of, of this promotion. Sorry, this is the secretary. Postponing the trip, take this one for infant Jesus and Vincent Peter Rhodes. Then, um, um, bad working environment, somebody, if you have. Infant Jesus is a root in Delta State, in Asaba, please. The environment in the NDDC headquarters today is very poor. If you've been there, cramped, packed rooms. So somebody is talking about there's no justification to go to a new headquarters building that has been going on for almost twenty years. Lhasa fever kits, maternal delivery kits, science equipment for secondary schools, all those contracts and payments were before the IIMC two came on board, we didn't do any Lhasa fever payments. Lhasa fever payments, let me give you the expenditure profile of the IMC before me. So that you can see the payments, I'm going to give you the documents of the Lhasa fever kits and everything before we came in. Then, um, I think I'll stop for now, but the thing is that, like, we've gone through a media trial and be judged. I've seen all things about face of a thief, my face, face of a thief, for, with no proof of me stealing anything. I'm going to get documents to hand over to secretary so that you can, uh, thank you. Honorable colleagues. Uh, you heard the MD. So, any member that has question in relation to the presentation that you have made. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Honorable Ben, Bakwa, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Honorable Ben Roland Igbaqua. I represent Ethiopia East, Ethiopia West, and by the special grace of God, we are from Delta State. MD, sir, you know you are my brother. Who authorizes the information that leaves NDDC?
Sorry.
What, what?
I mean, like, um, if I'd said, take care for yourself, I must have said that in anger. Yes, sir.
You are before this committee, answer the question direct. Because you are under oath.
I'm under oath.
Yes, answer the question. That the one point five billion, one point five billion COVID-nineteen positive you took.
It was not one point five billion, please. I'm thirty-two. But billion, yes.
Is it under oath?
Okay, it's not under oath, that's why I said that we provide the answer, I said that we provide the answer.
No, uh, MD. With you. The budget of twenty nineteen, you have it with you, correct? MD, twenty nineteen budget, in which you have told this committee that you, is the budget.
In the absence of a cure for COVID-nineteen, two medications have made international headlines, hydroxychloroquine and chloroquine. Hydroxychloroquine is an antimalarial. Hydroxychloroquine is an antimalarial drug very similar to chloroquine, but with less toxic side effects. For decades, tablets containing chloroquine were used in the treatment of malaria to reduce.
Budget we sign for you in twenty nineteen, you have it here.
Okay, they say they have gone to make up his. I said I will provide this to you.
Okay.
Hello and welcome to Horizon News. This is Newsday, I'm Leila Johnson Salami.
And I am Eron Akirijala. And today we've been watching the proceedings from the House of Representatives. As the committee have continued adhering on the Niger Delta developments, our commissions, financial malfeasance, allegations being leveled against the particular agency. And joining us today to shed more light on this and also give us an inside view to what's been going on and the proceedings so far. We've had the acting managing director of the NDDC presenting or bringing up, as he wants to say, his own side of the story of the allegations being leveled against him. Joining us is our eyes analyst, Iman Al Fenni.
Great. Let's actually start off with that because that was the breaking news. When the chairman of the NDDC committee at the House of Reps recused himself from the panel. And the vice chairman then stepped up, of course, to take over that place. Mister Fenni, over to you.
Yes, of course, the highlight thus far is the fact that the chairman of that committee, Honorable Olobumi Tunji Ujo, had to recuse himself. Because recall the last time the MD of the acting MD appeared. He accused, he made some accusations against the chairman of the committee, which in itself threw the investigation, as they call it, into some hurt. Now, it's a good thing he has recused himself. Because when you are accused and it's good you recuse yourself so that the work can go on. And the new chairman is Honorable Thomas Yurayitomi, who is representing the Wari Federal constituency. But the investigation has taken off. The acting chairman of the acting MD of the NDDC, Professor Pondy, is speaking on oath. And he's made some submissions, but he seemed to be having problem producing some documents. Try to clarify the issues of scholarships, which he said were not awarded by this interim committee. But what they did was to try to settle the backlog of takeoff scholarship grant to students who are studying abroad, which the NDDC awarded over time, and they tried to attend to that. And of course, he also mentioned backlog of hotel bills, electricity bills, which they had to settle backlog. But the issue where it seemed to have got his stock is the issue of one point five billion Naira palliative, which the committee under is was paid to members of staff and members of the committee.
But he said, he mentioned that when they came in, the morale was very low.
Yes.
Promotions have not happened in four years. And would that be a way of almost making a case for the fact that one point five billions?
No, not quite, not quite. Because when we talk of palliative, we should know what we are talking about. COVID nineteen related palliative. That's where palliative came into the lexicon in recent conversations.
Yes.
That people who had hit by the COVID nineteen restrictions needed some palliative.
Mister Fenni, let's head back to the NDDC probe now and let's find out what's going on.
Is this money budgeted to in twenty nineteen budget for Clearpoint Communication? Thank you.
Yes, sir, this money is part of the two point five billion Naira that is in for the forensic audit in the two thousand and nineteen budget.
Andy.
Yes, sir.
Please speak out, speak out.
For the two thousand and nineteen budget, there was a proposal for two point five billion for the forensic audit, out of which about one point two was approved. And out of that, I think three hundred and eighteen was approved for the lead forensic auditors. And only a small percentage has been paid out before the budget expired on the thirty first.
MD.
Yes, sir.
I believe I'm going to ask questions and should be answered so that Nigerian should know.
Yeah.
I said, this money you paid to Clearpoint Communication, the money entails for what? What did you contract?
The purpose for the.
Just hold on, hold on. What this money entails for? And is this money budgeted in twenty nineteen? That's my question to you.
Okay, thank you very much. The money was paid to Clearpoint Communication for a variety of purposes, all related to the forensic audits. The there are one hundred eighty-five local government areas. And each of them was budgeted for three point four six million. One allowances for coordinators per local government area. Training for the coordinators, setting up of information desk for the coordinators. These coordinators are the people to identify the sites of all the projects in the NDDC area. Because part of the problems, if you read the Auditor General's report on NDDC between two thousand and eight and two thousand and twelve.
Okay, hold on. You contracted Clearpoint Communication to itemize or point the project you have in NDDC areas? Is that what you are trying to say?
They will get local people in each of the local government. They will recruit local people in each of the local government areas to identify these sites.
The site for what?
Where the NDDC projects are. Because most times when they go for inspection, people are not able to locate these projects. And so we needed local people who will guide and also.
So you pay, hold on, so you pay six forty-one million for a Clearpoint Communication, maybe a consulting company, to locate, to ask people to locate project of NDDC?
Excuse, listen.
Your own project.
Listen, sir, the people need to be trained also as pointers for projects. If you, listen, we, we were trying to change the narrative, if you.
Just leave, I didn't finish. I can, I still, so, sorry, please, sorry. So, so the Clearpoint, the only work we contract Clearpoint to do is to ask people to point project for you.
Clearpoint has been a consultant in the NDDC before I even came in. Clearpoint had been.
But it's named Clearpoint Communication.
They are putting desks, tables, and I mean, I mean, help desks, communication desks in all the places to locate the projects.
Okay, is that, is that budgeted in twenty nineteen? Is six forty-one budgeted for Clearpoint in the line item of twenty nineteen budget? Is it budgeted for that purpose to Clearpoint Communication?
I wouldn't say it was, Clearpoint is written in that budget. As a line item, I don't think so.
Okay, again, you paid five hundred and thirty-six million Naira to a company with the tagging of the campaign Save Life in the Naira Delta Area. That company, we want to know the company. And is this five thirty-one million equally budgeted for to save lives of Niger Delta people? That's another question for you. Save life campaign, five hundred and thirty-six million Naira, you paid it. I'm, I'm bringing out issues based on the report you give us to the committee. Six forty-one to Clearpoint Communication, five thirty-six to Save Life Campaign in the Naira Delta Area.
I will need to check and get back to you.
You need to check?
Yes, sir.
Okay, fine. Next thing.
Mister Chairman. Thank you for yielding the floor to me, Mister Chairman. Do I have the floor?
Yes.
Yeah, all right, Mister Chairman. MD. The first point I want to make is that you should not be irritated that we are asking you questions about the budget. Under section eighty of the nineteen ninety-nine constitution, which guides us. Apart from lawmaking, the other job we do is oversight. We have this power of the post. It's one of the strongest, one of the most important powers we have, power of the post. That post is the budget. And that is why virtually every question we are asking you here has to do with the budget. The budget is very important, even to private individuals. Because you are not expected as an agency to spend money outside your budget. I hope you know that. Yes, sir. Now, you told us under oath right here that you are still preparing to pay money to students who are on scholarship. Now, we are aware that you don't have a twenty twenty budget yet. What you are operating is the twenty nineteen budget, which, as you know, and as we know, ended May thirty-first, twenty twenty. We are now in July. So you are not expected to be spending money from budget twenty nineteen, that's expired. From where are you going to spend this money? You said here on oath that you are preparing to pay students who are on scholarship. Are you aware that every expenditure you make from thirty-first May till date are not?
You are still tuned into Newsday and we are still watching the House of Representatives NDDC hearing in which the current acting NDDC chairman, in which the current acting NDDC chairman, Mister Kikebradi Kumoponde, does look like he is collapsing on screen. And people around him are trying to revive him. We're wondering why they cannot get immediate medical attention. Eron, this is a very worrying situation that we're seeing, Mister Fenni too.
It's quite, it's quite horrific what we are seeing right now, actually going down live TV. And it's unfortunate that in the National Assembly, we do not have standby medics that could actually, in which could actually just attend to this man. And this is, these are things we've complained in this country time and time again. Whereby we do not have in train, in trained personnel who can actually attend to this. We've always seen seizures like this, when they do happen, when they do happen, is convulsing. Yeah, when seizures like this, when they do happen, usually the first thing people will try to always do is to always look for a way to probably separate the mouth without proper protocol. But we are hoping that he actually gets the medical attention that is needed. Without a doubt, this particular hearing is over for today. Whatever would happen would be adjourned till another day. But the drama in the NDDC, and the financial malfeasance leading up to this point, is just, they just keeps taking a different turn.
Honestly, I am shocked. I don't think anyone was expecting that. Senator Papio is still seated there on the screen. So we do not have exact information yet with regards to what is going on. Mister Fenni, let's bring you in here. You've been sitting with us as we have been watching them question the acting MD of the NDDC on the budget, in which after a couple of minutes, he started to convulse and he started looking like he was having a seizure. And he was walked out. Mister Fenni, over to you.
Yes, the acting managing director of the NDDC, Professor Pondy, who was actually, who had the floor, haven't taken oath to give his testimony and his own position about what happened a short while ago, that seizure. It started when he removed his glasses. And one would thought he was trying to read, but he was just going down and down. Somebody noticed it and they had to try to give him some first aid. Yes, very unfortunate that no medics could be called in immediately, but he has been taken out. But before he was got to that point, he was actually answering some questions. And about expenditure, which the committee mentioned, payment he made to Clearpoint Communication, a consultant company. And for what purpose? To help identify NDDC projects in the various local governments. One hundred eighty-five local governments in all the NDDC states. And of course, they needed clarity on that. Also, the amount of five hundred and thirty-six million Naira, which was paid for campaign on save lives, save life campaign, which of course he also had some problem explaining.
Yeah.
And I think the question that really threw him off balance was that the budget they have been operating happened to be the twenty nineteen budget, which expired on May thirty-first. So they wanted to know on which, which budget, which sub heads, where he is getting those expenditure, they are actually spending. they are actually spending.
All right, let's move back to Abuja, where, to the House of Representatives, where the public hearing on the NDDC's financial malfeasance is still going on, seated there. And yet soon be called up for his own testimony is the Minister of the Niger Delta, talking about Senator Gotsul Akwabu.
Chairman. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Chairman.
Chairman, please come. Mr. Chairman, my name is, my name is Honorable Chairman. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I suggest motion.
Honorable Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, sir. My fellow colleagues, my fellow colleagues, may I apply that we observe 30 minutes break, please? 30 minutes break, please? Let us observe, let us have 30 minutes break, coffee break. Thank you, I so apply.
I second the observation and the motion raised by Honorable Ole that this committee should adjourn for 30 minutes. I second.
The point of order looked there to, to effect that we should go, we should step down for 30 minutes is hereby sustained. We will be back, we will be back here by 2:1:35.